That's an important point. See, I could just do the mic drop and walk out of here and there's really nothing to do. But why am I here today? And it's because you and my constituents are hungry for information, they're hungry for connectivity. And as I get down in this presentation, you're going to see why the Public Service Commission is sort of taking the baton on this and trying to be a leadership agency in accelerating information, getting it out there and trying to help this aspect of utility service that is not quite yet determined to be an essential utility service here in the state of Mississippi. And we're going to talk about what we're trying to do to get that changed. So broadband, how do we get there? How do we achieve what we're looking for? Universal connectivity of high speed, high quality, affordable internet services for everybody, not just those cities, those urban neighborhoods, but everybody, rural internet service. How do we get there? What form of technology? Well, of course, we're all familiar with the landlines. We've had DSL for a long time, but now we're moving to fiber optic. But getting that last mile becomes cost prohibitive. So what about fixed wireless internet solutions? There are those believe that's the future, others not so much. But it does provide opportunities to get in those rural areas with a smaller upfront capital outlay. And then we continue here about satellite. May I saw on the news where last night and night before SpaceX sent up another Falcon 9 rocket to launch another 60 satellites into orbit so they can offer the Starlink service at some time in the near future. Again, that's going to be a challenge, but it's something that creates another The access to broadband is not universal as much as we may hear about that. You see these maps and you hear what the FCC talks about, hey, everybody has it. Those maps are just it's very flawed in how they came about that methodology. I think it says 93% of Madison County and the facts and figures are in one of those newsletters has access to broadband. Well, how do you define broadband? And that is continued to be a moving target over the years. When in reality, if you apply the 253 speeds or the 100-100 speeds, that access is much smaller than what is out there. We want to help fix that and we need to fix that here in the state of Mississippi if we're going to have a clear picture of who has access and how we deliver those services to them. So what is being done? So you may remember in 2019, we had the Mississippi Broadband Enabling Act that really focused and targeted those rural electric cooperatives in the state of Mississippi to allow them the opportunity to get into the internet delivery business, to create that subsidy separate from the electricity side to begin offering those services. Unfortunately, Rankin County is 100% served by an investor-owned utility, Entergy. Their business is to generate, transmit, and deliver energy to your doorstep. They don't really want to be in the broadband business. However, they do on the right of ways where lines underground and above ground, and that's something that we might can facilitate down the road, utilize. Then last year, we had the Broadband COVID-19 Act, which provided $75 million in grants to be leveraged one-to-one. So we actually had about $160, $165 million that went to delivery and instant implementation of broadband in rural areas. Fifteen rural electric cooperatives took advantage of this, four broadband providers, well, two broadband providers and two water companies. And two water systems, one in Sebastopol, one in North Lauderdale, they had enough elevated towers, they can hang radio signals off them and get pretty good coverage of their service area. And our public utility staff, as well as the Public Service Commission, is helping monitor the rollout of those dollars and are they achieving those connections? And we're seeing really good progress in that. And as you saw, the Pandemic Broadband Availability Act, that was money through the Department of Education, through the CARES Act to help with connectivity and device delivery, and we've seen that statewide now. The Public Service Commission also created the Connect Mississippi Committee, where we brought leaders together from northern, central, and southern districts to bring their ideas of how we can deliver broadband faster in the state of Mississippi. We also do the ETC certifications for the USDA Reconnect America Fund. And as you may have known recently, latter part of this past year, $9.4 billion through the Rural Digital, Rural Digital Opportunity Fund was delivered to folks around the nation. $495 million is coming to the state of Mississippi. So out of
Say that number again.
$495 million is coming to the state of Mississippi. Unfortunately, we'll talk about where that falls in line with Madison County. So I talked about, and just real quick backing up, so that Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, the original fund is $20.4 million. $9.2 was awarded. There's still $11.2 million to be rewarded in next phase, Phase Two, which could occur by the end of this year. Realistically, it'll probably happen first quarter of 2022. So I mentioned the COVID-19 Act. A lot of that money went to rural areas, rural electric cooperatives. One rural electric provider here, C Spire, got a little bit of money to deliver here in the state to do about four businesses on the west side of Canton. That was the only money that came to Madison County in that, again, because it's targeted for those rural electric cooperatives to use. The Rural Digital Opportunity Fund I mentioned, $495 million, came to the state of Mississippi. If you average that out across our 82 counties, that's about $6.5 million. Madison County got $3.3 million. Why? Again, just because the challenges of who can serve here in this county and who stepped up to make those bids to serve those unserved and underserved areas of the state. The two winning successful bidders was a group called Connect Everyone, and they use a fixed wireless technology and SpaceX Technologies, which are going to do the low earth orbit non-geostationary satellite, so satellite internet. No successful fiber providers were awarded money to help deliver that. That could change in second part of that, but we'll see. I mean, the Reconnect Program through USDA, we saw about $17 million come to Mississippi last year through small communities applying for money and leveraging that through other private rural internet providers. So what are we doing here in the state of Mississippi, you know, through legislation? We talked about the investor-owned utilities. They're in the energy delivery business, not in the broadband business. However, HB 2798, that's the primary vehicle that has survived all the deadlines, committees, and dates. It's the primary vehicle of helping, what we can do, deliver and expand participation of investor-owned utilities in broad, delivery of broadband services. So, you know, I mentioned that we still don't recognize internet as an essential service, an essential utility service here in the state of Mississippi, despite COVID-19, the need to shut down schools and businesses and work from home, school at home, do business from home, shop from home, all those types of things protect your health and safety. This bill will make the expansion of rural internet a policy of the state of Mississippi. It creates the Broadband Accessibility Act, basically an extension of our Code of 19 broadband program to allow the state to bring in grant dollars from federal sources and to redirect that through a award process. Authorizes investor-owned utilities to utilize their right of ways, their electric delivery system to help facilitate and create a more cost-effective path for rural internet delivery from fiber, whether it's underground or above ground pole attachments. And it'll also authorize the PSC to enter in federal contracts to develop a truthful map of broadband utilization and access here in the state, something we don't have today. So what is lacking, as I mentioned? Why is the PSC stepping up even though we have no regulatory oversight or authority when it comes to expansion of broadband? Well, we don't have a state broadband office in Mississippi. There is no single agency, no broadband czar, as you call it. Who do you go to for information for that type of stuff? And it's something we've tried to do at the PSC, to be that resource. We don't regulate it, we can't force utilities or providers to do certain things, but we want to help inform bodies like yourself what they can and can't do. We don't have a state broadband coordinator, as I mentioned, too. We don't even have a state plan for broadband delivery and investment and deployment here in this state. I think we're one of two states in the nation that's recognized as not having an official, recognizable broadband plan of how we plan to invest, deploy, and bring everybody into the fold into the 21st century. We need an online presence. You'll see there's a link there from West Virginia, broadband.wv.gov. I urge y'all to go take a look at it. That is a very good resource for West Virginia, think a very rural state, similar to Mississippi in some ways. We kind of compete at the bottom at the top of good and bad polls from time to time. But they have certainly taken steps to put a lot of resources in one place, very accessible, and I think we need to find a way to replicate that here in the state of Mississippi. Federal legislation. So as we know, the president recently signed the America Recovery, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, $1.9 trillion. And there is money in there for broadband, for schools and libraries, emergency assistance for state and local governments, infrastructure aspects, and connectivity on students and instructors. So there's pathways, money will be coming down to the state of Mississippi. And hopefully you and, you know, folks who work for Madison County Community Action Agency and other non-governmental organizations can find ways to partner together and help bring money into this county to deploy rural internet where it's currently not served. And as you do that, you know, really try to find a way to seek out those public and private partnerships, you know, how cities and towns can evaluate opportunities to bring commercial broadband to this area. A point of recognition, the Madison County Business League and Foundation, they have a two-tiered policy program for 2021, state and federal. You'll find the advancement and deployment of broadband on both those lists. So they're working at the state and federal level to bring resources, identify pathways to expand broadband here in the state of Mississippi. So I urge folks to look at ways to find how that can be done. So, you know, one thing we want to say is as we go forward, you know, be aware of what's out there. What are those, you know, people that you can partner with? You know, here in Madison County, of course, we have C Spire located originally and headquartered there. Tremendous opportunities. Here in Canton, you got Osburn Communications, and they've been doing some wireless internet service provider activities out in the county areas. And I think, Ms. Sheila, you mentioned a minute ago, another that you're familiar with that does those type of activities. You know, just don't focus on any one. Look at the opportunities, request for qualifications, delivery of service, the quality of service, what those price points are that customers and citizens out there are willing to pay for that high-speed, high-quality service. Because funding, while it has been a major barrier, as we continue to see these monies come down to state and federal levels, that's not the biggest barrier as it used to be. But being prepared and being ready for those types of things, getting ahead of the curve, establishing a plan now and finding a way to utilize those resources is the way to go, we believe. You know, while these programs are certainly competitive, by creating these partnerships, I think it gives Madison County a leg up in really planning, doing a budget, and determining where those areas of greatest need are. So, you know, preparing those grants, we provided, you know, some tips we believe will help make Madison County and its partners develop a strong plan of work, strong applications for resources out there, and how to determine the best pathway for doing that, you know, expediting that activity and being very competitive out there in the economic sector. So we're certainly ready to help. Part of our mission is to empower and take every opportunity to advance the economic development of the state of Mississippi, and we do that through the expansion of broadband fiber optics and helping, you know, working with utilities who have those pathways, leveraging, you know, grid enhancements, and they use fiber optics for that. And there's opportunities to lease the dark fiber network as they communicate between plants and substations and distribution networks. There's ways to help leverage those resources as well. So I know I covered a lot of information and just trying to be respectful of your time this evening, but again, you will see that there's several pieces of information, newsletters in there. We would certainly welcome your signing up and delivering that to you on a timely basis from week to week. And I guess we will jump to any questions or comments or anything we can do to help clarify any information that we provided this evening.
Okay.
I'd just like to thank you for coming up here and letting us know what's going on.
I know it's a lot out there. It's a lot of moving parts. I wish we had a better focus and a more defined role in this sector of the industry. There's a lot of players out there and they want to do the right thing. And perhaps through this state legislation, that will be more narrowly defined and give county and local leaders and others that centralized resource where you can go for information, for data, things like that. I hope that we get the opportunity to, as I say, create these statewide maps where we know who is and who is not served and at what speed, and even what are the prices of those sources of delivery. It's going to take time, but we've seen it accomplished in other states. We just need the permission, number one, and the resources to go do it, to leverage with federal dollars that are out there today that we can do and hopefully get a good map accomplished, hopefully by the end of the year. But it all depends on what happens at the state level.
Mr. Commissioner, we appreciate you coming and as Supervisor Baxter said, giving us a lot of information. But there are, just looking through some of the information you give us, who are these two companies here in Madison? I said Connect Everyone LLC and Space Exploration Technology Corporation. What is their responsibilities?
Well, they were successful bidders in this ARDOF
Or for what?
The Rural Digital Opportunity Fund that I mentioned. It's a large grant program administered by the FCC, Federal Communications Commission. And so it was a reverse auction of sorts. So they throw these areas out there that they've mapped out or unserved across the U.S., and they bid on them. We can provide rural internet service, whether it's fiber, fixed wireless, or satellite technology, at X amount of dollars per location. And you bid down, bid down till it stops, and they're the winning bidder. And they're the ones who won these unserved areas in Madison County.
So are you saying that these two companies are going to work on areas in Madison County that's not being served?
Yes, sir.
Are they going to work through the county or
No, sir.
How are they going to
I mean, they
Just themselves?
So they will, yeah, so they will, they have announced, both these groups have submitted applications to our office, and that's really the only regulatory tool we have is when companies receive federal dollars, we're that sort of watchdog to ensure the money that they're receiving is being invested the way they say they're going to in their broadband delivery plan and that they're meeting the objectives of connecting customers on a year-by-year basis.
How are they going to do that?
So they got to connect at least 40% of these locations, these 140 locations and 1,700 locations, at least 40% of them within three years, and then another 20%, another year, and another 20% till they have offered this service. It's not saying everybody will take it, but at least it's there available for those locations. And those locations are determined by those FCC broadband maps that we know are not exactly accurate, and it leaves a lot of people out.
How are y'all going to offset that then? If y'all know the maps are not correct, and these two companies are going to go according to what's on those two maps, well, I mean, and I see here on the other, as you indicated earlier, 93% of Madison County, as you have here, that you give us that have access, if they choose to, to broadband. So if we know that those maps are wrong, and these two companies here are going to work off those maps, and they're going to answer it to y'all because you're going to hold them responsible, how is all that's going to work?
It's a challenge. There's no doubt about it. But we know these locations. We just know there's so many more out there. And hopefully the Phase Two of this pot of money when it comes along the next year or more gives us an opportunity to go back in and we hopefully can use our maps, we can challenge FCC maps, replace theirs with ours, and have a much clearer picture of where that money needs to go. So I mentioned we have $49, $495 million come to the state of Mississippi. We were second only to the state of California. And we believe if our apps were 100% accurate, we would have blown everybody out of there. We would have passed California and everybody. That's just what the maps were allowing. We know there's a lot more unserved and underserved people across the state of Mississippi. But because of the way those maps were developed, it was a form submitted by your incumbent telecommunications providers who say, heck yeah, we serve all these people out there. And they sign it and send it in, and FCC says, okay, you serve a lot of folks. You know, they certainly don't want to look bad in the public eye. And so they're not, they're not, like I said, the methodology of how they're established was not on the up and up. So now if we go back and double check, we see that they might have embellished a little bit where they serve and don't serve.
I want to stay here in Madison County.
Mm-hmm, okay.
All right, I want to stay right here in Madison County at this point. Do we know who those 140 and 1,706 locations are?
We do. They are within assigned and identified what they call census blocks. So we do know where those are.
Can they be shared? Can you share those with us?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay, do you mind sending our administrator an email tomorrow with those?
Drop that down for me. Yeah, we'll follow up and get the information of where those locations, those census blocks are, and overlay them easily. We'll overlay them on a map. You identify, you know, within the areas. Most of them are in northern Madison County.
Yeah.
And they're kind of scattered out in western Madison County as well.
Okay. And that's really what we want to see or hear is where are they? And then I guess you said next year there would be more.
We certainly feel, I can hope so. Yeah, that's what the second round is coming in, fill those gaps and hopefully have better understanding, better maps, and better idea of who is actually not receiving service.
How can we as supervisors to look at the map or look at these locations when you send them and then say, well, next year, we would like for these sections to be considered? Is it, I mean, is that something we can do or is that overstepping the
No, it is not, and we would welcome that for sure, to challenge the existing maps. We have seen other states do it. Even Mississippi has challenged these maps and have not been successful. It takes a lot to challenge FCC map, even when you really know we have, we're very confident in our information. They're not willing to admit mistakes or fault. It's just the challenge of dealing with, you know, federal agency that's, and that's just kind of the reality of it. And that's why we really need to do our own.
But y'all's role in this is to hold these two companies accountable.
That the money they're receiving from the federal government is being spent wisely and prudently, no waste, fraud, and abuse, and that it's going to these locations that they've identified they will serve.
Okay, that they will serve. Okay.
They will offer service. They could put, you know, everybody available, but still it's up to the customer to choose to take it or not.
That's right. They'll have the option.
You know, and I know we understand there's not a lot, you know, fiber's not everywhere. And in many cases, if it was economically feasible for areas to be served, these providers would already be there. But they kind of know, based on just years and years of history, what the subscription rate would potentially be per line mile of fiber and things like that in rural areas. And they weigh their financial metrics and economic models, whether it makes sense that they'll get a return on that investment in X amount of time if they extend that fiber. And that's just, that's the reality of this. It's a free-market system in rural internet and without significant subsidization like we're seeing here, it's hard to encourage and have people go out to those rural areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Paul, let me make sure I'm understanding you right. First, I want to say thank you for coming here, and we're going to have your path going home a lot smoother soon.
That's right.
You saying that the two companies that getting ready to do some work in northeast Madison County now are using funds, federal funds that they already have? Or is it coming out of the American Rescue package?
Now, this is a whole different, whole different pot of money through the FCC. They appropriated this a couple of years ago.
Years ago.
And we just now getting to the point where they're now delivering it.
Okay, by the time the money hit the bank from the American Rescue
Oh, this most recent one?
That's just passed. Where are we looking to put some of that money?
It'll have to work
Northeast Madison County.
It'll have to work its way through the process down to the state, and depending on where the mechanisms go through the State Department of Education, other mechanisms to help deliver that, possibly our state legislature. So that's why they sort of revived this broadband accessibility program that was used last year, brought that back, and hopefully it can serve as a vehicle for any money that does come down. It's still unknown, but we certainly hope so.
Okay, what I'm getting to is after that email comment and we see the location where they're working it now.
So for those
Is there any way we can add on to the project that ongoing and extend it out there further?
That would be, we wouldn't have that authority, but certainly you could initiate discussions with these entities.
With the companies, those two companies.
I don't see why not. That would be a choice of this board and how you may want to go with that. But, you know, to leverage potential resources to further serve them or any broadband provider.
Okay. In your opinion
And we have seen examples of this in other areas where counties, you know, pony up a little money to help leverage incentivize investments. I mean, it's not unheard of.
Okay. In your opinion, in central Mississippi, in your area, especially Madison County, do we have the companies in the, enough companies that handling the internet to do the job to get rural internet out there? I heard the term of co-ops in northeast Madison County, northeast Mississippi, that is was used to get a lot of federal dollars to get their internet service up there. Do we have enough here in our area?
Rural electric co-ops.
Yeah.
That was rural electric co-op?
So there's none that serve Madison County. Madison County is 100% served by Entergy Mississippi, an investor-owned utility. Like I said, there's legislation now at the state that will help ease that pathway open for them to utilize their rights of way for access by broadband providers. So you don't have to recreate the will of gaining easements and right of ways as part of their energy delivery mechanism, pathways.
Okay.
So
Because, you know, you know our pain. You live up there. The teachers can't teach from home, the student can't learn at home because of lack of internet. The school district gave them all
Devices?
iPads, devices. What good is a device when you have nothing to hook up with?
That's correct.
We got another resident here. I've been living in northeast Madison County that's in that business. Are we going to be able to help him provide internet service with some of their federal money?
Certainly possible.
I'm going to have to work with anybody that going to give us some internet service, broadband out there.
I mean, it's overcoming that upfront cost barrier and, you know, providing a service that customers are willing to pay for and can afford. Money gets you anything, but you got to have an, you know, incentive, I believe, systems nowadays for those providers to go in those challenging areas where you have low-density populations. I mean, that's why these rural electric cooperatives, you know, within the central district, I only have one rural electric cooperative that's providing that service, and that's East Mississippi. Central Electric, Yazoo Valley, Twin County, and Southern Pine, they all have footprints in central district. Even southwest, they chose not to go there because all of them have customers within the single digits per line mile averaged out across their territory. And by the Mississippi Broadband Act, if they choose to get in that business, they have to have a written plan of how they're going to serve 100% of their customers with an X timeframe. And that's just a huge financial barrier that, and that risk that you put on their membership base. And a lot of northeast ones are doing it because a lot of those rural electric cooperatives have a footprint of like a county or two. Central Electric serves all or seven counties. Delta, I mean Yazoo Valley, all of about five. Southern Pine, all are part of about 13. I mean, that's a large area for those guys, and it's just a huge financial risk for them to embark on at this time.
So this company, Connect Everyone LLC, that's, they've got to bid, I guess, for Madison County. Is there another company?
I mean, certainly Madison County, they have, they won areas in both Madison, Atala, Rankin, parts of Hines, and some other areas as well. But I was just being specific of where they are here in Madison County.
And there's another company also that won parts of Madison, you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Now, which one is satellite-based?
That's SpaceX Technologies. SpaceX, and their service is called Starlink.
Okay. And the other companies are more landline-type?
Most of them, yes, sir. Yeah, most you'll see out there.
Okay.
There's all sorts of options. It's just what works best.
And if we
Achieves what we're trying to do.
Do you have contact information for these companies that have Madison County so that we supervisors can make a decision if we want to make contact with them?
Yes, sir.
See what they're doing, see what their plan is, and see how quickly they can get us broadband in our most
But like I said, we know there's a lot more outside of these locations that are deserving of this and have that need. And that's what I'm saying, you know, are deserving of this and have that need, and that's what I'm saying, you know, hopefully there's other ways, other pathways that might can accelerate this activity in the state without waiting on, you know, the federal government and their grants to filter on down, because I'm telling you, it's gonna take a little time to get these guys up and going, but...
And also on these companies, and I hope someone will listen, you know, we'll be some of the biggest lobbyists for them to continue those projects that they got going on in North Madison County. So I think it would be a wise thing for them to contact us, or we definitely gonna have Shelton, our county administrator, to contact them to see can we lobby the state, federal government, whoever to...
Well, if anything we can do to help, just let us know, we want to be a resource for you guys, we don't have the regulatory hammer option, but we want certainly be a resource.
I talked to a company, well, one of the owners of a company from South Mississippi that was interested too, didn't know we didn't have any service up here in the north part of the county, so I don't think we ought to rule out anyone at this point. If they don't know we need help, they might be able to be the ones that help us, and so I just don't want us to forget that.
Well, Commissioner Bailey, I really appreciate you coming by. We all, I think, have learned a lot from your presentation, and we all are very interested in seeing what we can do to expand broadband in Madison County, in our rural areas. It's pretty dire when you don't have the ability to connect to the internet. It's just totally necessary now in this time.
Especially our kids, especially our kids in school.
Yeah, the last 12 months has certainly shined a bright spotlight on those weaknesses and infrastructure deficiencies in the system and where the needs certainly are, so I appreciate the time y'all provided. I know we ran a little late and y'all have a big agenda, but I thank you guys so much for the time, and feel free, my contact information, my card is in those packages, feel free to call or email at any time, and we'll do what we can to get you what you need.
Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, we're still on concerned citizens, so I noticed some more concerned citizens outside, at least one.
The first on your agenda is Linda Salas.
What road, do we know?
I believe that she is here to talk about Swamp Road.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Linda Salas, and what else I supposed to be saying?
I can't hear you.
My name is Linda Salas, and what else do I supposed to be saying? Huh?
Address.
Oh, 203 North Street, Lexington, Mississippi. I'm here today because I was hearing December about Swamp Road that my grandparents had property over there, and I'm thinking about moving back in that area, and I, that particular time I was told that someone, Mr. Epps, was gonna get back in contact with me, and never did. The other day, but wait a minute. I went and got an easement, well, I called up here to get on the agenda last month, and they told me to send whatever I had, you remember that, to you, you remember that? That's when I sent an easement to you, last month.
We spoke last week.
Yeah, that's what I just said, you just returned my call last week, but I asked to get on the agenda last month because I hadn't heard from nothing since December. And your secretary or whatever she is told me to fax the paper that I had.
I don't have a secretary.
Well, who, the administration here.
Okay, let's go ahead with this story.
What's your request?
Yeah, let's move forward, what's your request?
My request is that it used to be a road back there, the school bus used to go back there. I'm either asking this board to reopen the road or give me a road back there, and I know that, I know you are familiar with Mr. Joe Evans, because he told me he'd been coming up here, and Miss Hattie, before she died, they all told me they had been coming up here about the complaints on Swamp Road and stuff. And I always come to Madison County on the second Sunday because that's where I go to church, and I always go back to the property, search both properties that we have in Madison County. And I noticed that this Sunday when I went back there, that Swamp Road sign was gone. It's not even a sign there, and so I took the road all the way to the back part because there's a back entrance coming in, and it is a sign back there, and where the people stay, the road is very bad where the people stay, but it's a company back there that grows trees and they don't plant, they don't, they taking the trees out, and that road is very, very good in the part where the company is taken care of, and it is a swamp sign down there. And my question is, 051, is that a state A road or is that a county road?
County road. It's a county road.
It's terrible too, gone, it's terrible, it's terrible too. And like I said, we have land on Truitt Road, and I went out on Truitt Road, and, well, like I said, Mr. Evans had brought y'all a list of peoples, but I went out on Truitt Road and half of the road gone. Oh, you... That's the half of the road gone, that's what Mr. Evans, Mr., half of the road gone. That's on Truitt, you got two Truitt Road, you got one to the left and one to the right. That's the one to the left. We got property down there too, and we got property on to the right too. So, like I said, every second Sunday I visit, and the one to the right, the one to the right is where we got trees and stuff, and at the end of the road, it looked like it might have been a bus turn around there, but nobody stayed back there, and that road is good. Let me just tell you that, that road is good. But this time when I went, they had done, it's not a bus turn around, it just rolled there now, so I stretched my car up trying to get out of there, because it's no way to get out now, like it was a private turn around. But anyway, most of the places that I went, that where we got property at, where nobody stays, the road is decent, but where the folks staying is horrible, it's terrible, and...
Ma'am, which road are you talking about?
I'm talking about all of them.
I'm just totally confused what you're asking for, and I was waiting, I guess, for the supervisor in that district, maybe I...
I'm confused too.
I'm just, I'm not sure what road you're asking about.
Can I just narrow everything based on what I know?
Yeah, well, I mean...
So when Ms. Salas was here before, remember she said that she needed an easement to get to property there, her family, I don't remember how she... And that we determined, just speaking, that we could not as a county, we didn't have authority to help her get an easement through private property when what she's trying to get to was private property, that there was no county property. So we said that, but we said that I would speak to her and try to help, so I did call, and I was just tell her that under Mississippi law, the owner couldn't deny her access to her property, it hasn't been an easement, but it was a private issue, you had to get a private lawyer, do it yourself, or whatever, we couldn't do it. In the course of conversation, she was telling me though that where she used to cross was a road there, so we discussed whether or not there was a road, and you said this was in the 1970s or the 1980s when you were a young girl. All right, so the question then was, was there road back then, was it abandoned, or what was it? So we, I called Shelton, and we researched whether or not there was a road ever there, and Shelton, I'm speaking for you, we couldn't find any road that was ever there, see, because if it was abandoned, then it's private and we still couldn't help her. If it was not abandoned, then, and therefore still public, then we could help. So that's where we left it, and that's why she's here today, but I don't, I talked to her about this one road on the issue that she had come to us in December. Now, I remember that Mr. Evans used to come here, I rode out the Swamp Road last year, and that was Mr. Evans, and Mr. Evans' concern was that there used to be a bus turnaround in Swamp Road, I rode that, and I told Mr. Evans that in my opinion, it was 50 yards, when you go off Swamp Road, you take a left, and then there's Mr. Evans' house and maybe another house, and then there was what looked like could have been a turnaround, but he wanted it paved and whatnot, and I say, well, I'm not a supervisor, but in my opinion, you know, if there weren't enough people and it wasn't enough area where you just couldn't walk to the main road and catch the bus, you know, but that was the school district's issue, and so I thought that what we could do is clean out the covert and put a sign there, and I spoke to Mr. Griffin, and I believe that was done. So that's what I know about Swamp Road, and we discussed the easement issue.
We did, what did you tell me about the easement issue?
What I said was that if it was, if it was private, we couldn't help. If it was public, then maybe we could do something if it was abandoned, and that's what I just told them, we discussed with Mr. Shelton.
I know, you told me that they were gonna look that up today.
And I said, just come on to the meeting, we'll discuss it, and that's why you're here.
Yeah, but you act like you had talked to me and told me about it. That's what it seemed like to me, I might be wrong.
Ma'am, I called you twice, I said, come on to the meeting, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, but we didn't discuss what you just telling me, that's all I'm saying.
This morning, ma'am.
No, you didn't call me this morning.
No, I didn't say I called this morning, we discussed it, Shelton.
Let's discuss it, let's discuss it with the board.
Okay, let me say one more thing about Mr. Joe Evans. On his road, it is a bus turnaround, and the, with this still on Swamp Road, are we still talking about Swamp Road? It is a bus turnaround. The road called Miss Remon Road, Remon Road, but it's coming off of Swamp Road. Y'all made it private, that's what I'm finna say, you made it private, you made it private, but you can't, according to the law, you cannot make a private road where a bus turnaround is and a mailman go back there, wherever the, right?
You want reciting the law, ma'am?
Well, I have...
I had read that statute, but the issue that you are trying to bring before this board from my...
Well, that's a lot of issues, but go ahead.
Okay, well, the main issue you were trying to bring before this board, you said you initially, you came out with you wanted an easement to go across private property to get to your property.
Right.
Okay, that was, that was the main issue. The pictures you brought us and you showed us some road work that needs to be done on Truitt Road and some of those, those public roads, and that work does need to be done, but you're here, you came to talk about an easement across private property to get to private property, and that is not what we as the supervisors can do, we can't grant you an easement across someone else's private property to get to your private property.
I got, I sent him an easement, sir, I have a copy.
So you still have an easement?
Can I, what do I do?
Yeah, well, yeah, the question is, do you still have an easement to get across that property?
Yeah, you show that to the, that is what I faxed up here to the...
You're right, if she has an easement, she can cross it.
Yeah, well, if you have an easement, you can, so you can cross the property, what are you asking the board for?
She has an easement, okay.
Okay, Ms. Salas, what are you asking the board for? You have the easement, then what are you asking us?
Wait a minute, maybe this ain't an easement, I don't know, let me see.
He just wrote that it's an easement.
But it does need to be filed with the land records, it's not valid at this time.
Well, where do I go, up here?
It's downstairs on the first floor.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, now, you said since I have an easement, what did you say?
No, I was trying to find out, since you have the easement that we started off that you felt you needed to get, you got it, what, why, what are you asking the board to do?
To give me a road out there, that's all I'm asking.
Well, let me explain something to you. You have the easement, and it's going across private property, to private property.
No, not to.
Well, it's going across private property, get to your property, which is private property. Now, that basically is your driveway, and guess who pays to and fixes your driveway? You do.
So that's basically my driveway?
You'd have to build the road from the public road through the private property to your property. The county can't get on private property and build roads.
Well, what good is the easement?
Well, you can get to your property now.
So you can get to your property, so you can build yourself a road?
Your neighbor wouldn't, doesn't have to let you across with him.
Your neighbor giving you an opportunity to cross his land to get to your land.
Thank you, y'all have a nice day.
Okay. Who else you have?
Mr. President, next is Parvy Jones, Parvy Jones.
What's the first name?
Parvy.
Harvey with the P?
Yes, that's Parvy.
Mr. President, Mr. Jones has two different issues, I'm gonna pass out two different sets of photos associated with his issues.
Look like firewood.
So what I had today, when they had the snow, I had some tree limb fell on the front of the tree, tree limb fell in the back of the tree, so they came out and they took the front... So they came out and they took the front part of the tree away. And I asked the guy out there, how far do easement go from the road? So the first set of guy come out, they said only to go to the curb. Then I had this other guy come out the other day, I think, sitting back here. He said with 25 feet. So then he measured, he said from the center of the road, he said 125 feet. So part of the debris is still only 25 feet. So I asked him when he was out there, why did, you know, just take the rest of it, you know? Because I'm a senior citizen, I can't be cutting all that and taking it to the road. So he said he couldn't do it because it was on private property. So then, and then when he came out, he said, well, just bring it down here to the board. We're not gonna do, you know, I told you, you need a clearance for that, for them to come on private property. I can sign there, that's no problem. The only thing, I need some help to get all that off, to get the debris off the back of the tree. And you see how old the tree is, so it's just a matter of time. The whole tree gonna fall, as a matter of fact, it tore my mailbox. So I went asking to buy me no mailbox, just come and get the limbs out of the yard so I can be able to cut this year.
Where is this at, sir?
Smith Carl Road.
Miss Carl Road.
Smith Carl Road.
Okay, so the, the issue, this particular issue we're talking about now is they came, you had storm damage.
Right.
Part of the tree fell, the tree fell all the way around.
Right.
Front, back, everywhere. Road department came out, and they got the tree limbs that fell on the road and in the ditch.
Right.
And they left the tree limbs that were right behind the tree.
Right behind the tree, and within that 25 feet that they was talking about.
They used the, they used the private property rule on you.
Right.
So everything that was in the ditch.
But they had enough.
And the road was fine, but this couldn't go on private property to get that limb that was, the limbs that were right behind the tree.
They had like five peoples out there getting the debris off the front. Then they called the supervisor, two most supervisor came out. So that, now that's five, six people. Then he came out, that's about the eighth person, you know? About that time, the tree could have been picked up, and it took about 15, 20 minutes. They could have had, you know, everything cut up and everything out of there. But it's up to them, you know, they said he couldn't do it, you know? So he needed an easement, I could, you know, sign off on it, they could have did it, you know?
I, you know, I, I don't understand it myself. I think that I would have expected as a taxpaying citizen, and that we got a storm that has caused a lot of damage on the roadside, and they are there. I would, I would have expected they would have probably picked the limbs up also.
That's what I was thinking.
They were doing the Einstein.
Yeah.
Did we declare an emergency?
Yeah.
An emergency.
Yeah. That was the emergency declared. You know, it's just one of those, one of those situations.
It looked like one limb left, right?
Huh?
Mike, if the, if the emergency is over, can they get that limb?
Sorry, boy.
Just the lawyer.
If it's a declared emergency and it goes into private property, you know that we can do it then?
Yes. Know you can do it then.
Know you can do it then. If it's a, if it's a result of the emergency.
And they probably was out there, but they didn't complete the job.
Well, they were out there, I mean, it's clear.
Did you call Mr. Griffin, probably, I mean?
Yeah, it's clear that they.